Start the meeting. Call the work session to order. Uh, Kate is Parker is participating via Zoom.
Okay. Um, so here's how the afternoon is kind of gonna look. We're going to uh go over the five year plan and how that affects property taxes and all that good stuff, just kind of a general overview of what we came up with last week at our budget review committee meeting. Then we're going to, or two weeks ago, I guess it was. Then Dr. Zeke is going to reintroduce you to the federal coronavirus acts, give you a summary of that and then kind of what, what uh is in that budget that's, that's kind of um to, that will be above and below the line come twenty twenty-five when those dollars go away. And then we'll go and look at the other funds of the, or we'll look at the general fund in a little bit more detail. And then we'll look at the other major funds of the district and uh I guess nobody signed up for public input, so won't have any public input on the budget and then we'll answer questions and all that good stuff. So if you, you can look on the screen, I'll get there, but if it's uh page five in your book, if you would like to take notes as you go. I'm gonna skip over this one and jump right to the one with the yellow. They're the same thing, but they show different things on the five-year plan. So what we're looking at here is the way we budget out our five-year plan and the yellow, the yellow portion of this is uh came out of uh meeting long ago with the Finance Action Network, which of course is made up of business leaders in the, in the Sioux Falls School District that look at our budget and suggest things to us. And these are kind of the trigger, the main trigger points of our, our budget and what would, so at one time they would play around with these and say, well, what if we did this and what if we did that? So we still use this every year when we go to the Budget Review Committee and so that it kind of highlights what this plan looks like. But you know, we're shooting for somewhere between eight and eight percent, five years out, that, that was a recommendation from them. What we have on our screen here, which you can see if you jump to the line twenty-one down there is seven point seven, but it's growing, so it's not, that's not a bad number to be at. So uh if you look at just some of the things to look at, we had COVID funding last year of three point two that we built into this, but we quit doing that because now it's built into the budget and Dr. Zeke will, will, will show you that. So that's built into the budget, so we took it out as a line item here going forward. State apportionment was down last year, we expected it might bounce back a little bit, but it's still lower than it had been. Our opt-out, last year we had projected, uh, well, we opted out for nine point one last year and we had in the budget plan had eleven million this year, so we went with that, we kept with that plan out going forward, just incrementally increasing it a bit each year, less than uh, you know, less than one percent of the budget each year. It had been at nine point one for about four, four years, maybe five. Transfer from capital outlay, last year we had in there three million two fifty, but uh the IT department was able to cut their share of the budget in the capital outlay by about a million dollars, so we took that savings and, and moved it over to the general fund for the period of this, for the foreseeable future on this budget. And then our state aid increase this year was six percent going, and that was above, if you saw our, our legislative report the other night, that was above what was in, in the inflationary increase of two-six, which lags, you know, that's, that's from twenty twenty-one. So we got six percent. Now, we know Bud, we know inflation this year is seven plus so far through, I think, February. And uh, but the, the law reads three percent inflation, whichever is less, so you can't plan on more than that. So we got three percent plugged in here going out. Efficiency factors, we got it at point seven-five across the board and that's not, I mean, it's less than a percent, but it's not anything to sneeze at because our budget's over two million dollars, so we're talking about a million and a half plus there. And then the line that's kind of, kind of the, the real focal point of this is line twenty-nine, the COVID nineteen expenditures, they're in the COVID budget of Kirk's and the, or Dr. Zeke's and the federal money. But in twenty twenty-five, that federal money will, that COVID dollars will go away. And so we have built in here right now, recommended to the board, three, almost three point seven million dollars in ongoing expenses that have to be picked up in the general fund. And you can see, if you look at that fund balance up there on line twenty-one up above, you can see it was seven point seven, or it's projected to be seven, seven and twenty-four, then it drops down to seven and that's when those, that's when those COVID funds hit. That have to be put into the regular general fund budget. We have the teacher delta at a million going out um into, into the future and we have health insurance increases at five percent. So that is a kind of our big trigger points in our budget. If you look down at the bottom, we always kind of, we always track what we, what we think the general fund levy will be going um in the, in the, yeah, in the general fund. So on the owner occupied, it's at three sixty-seven in twenty-two and we project it will be about three fifty out in twenty-seven even with a higher opt-out, so that's good. And then there's the opt-out levy only below that. Any questions on the five-year plan? I know everybody loves to talk about it, hear about it, it's very exciting. Okay, hearing none, move on. So we do always keep track of where our property tax levy is and, and try to keep that, try to balance that between an excellent education and, and being very responsive to our taxpayers as well. So here's the latest comparison to our neighbors, we're kind of like right where we were at last year. Our levy did drop a little bit last year, but out of eleven of us in the area, we rank, we still rank tenth in owner occupied levy and ninth in commercial levy. And that, the eleventh is lowest, first is highest. And then we always also look at the property value per student, a lot of times you'll hear if you're talking to somebody who really doesn't delve into the, yeah, but you guys have all that, that property tax base, we do, but it's not that big compared to the, the size of our population. So this is a year old, we can update this in our, for the budget book, but this is a year ago and I, I just checked the, the figures uh this afternoon. But we, in the states, our property value per student ranks one hundred and thirtieth and in our, of our neighbors, we rank seventh. We did, I had the twenty-two, I just loaded up the twenty-two data, but didn't get it in time for this book. We're one hundred twenty-ninth now in the state, but we're still seventh among our neighbors. So our neighbor with the most value around here is Canton with ninety-eight, so we're all of a sudden the bottom half of property value per student. So the, even though there is a lot of property value in this area per student, it isn't overwhelming. So it's one check we also do, just to, any questions on that? And then here's the, here's the detail of our levies and our projected levy for twenty twenty-three, which we don't know for sure till, till all the valuations are settled. But um, and you know, we always watch a house, the same house, it hasn't been added on due, so it's, you know, they haven't doubled the size of the garage or the footprint or anything like that, so it's good to know where we stand. So we go back, all the way back to two thousand and that house uh in two thousand was assessed at ninety-eight thousand, it's now assessed at a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, so it's about doubled in, in assessment. And it was recently sold a couple of years ago for much more than that, that figure there. But so it's assessed at a hundred and ninety-five thousand. The uh property taxes on that house are, were at a thousand ninety-seven, they're now at fourteen ninety-seven. All right, it's projected to be one ninety-five next year, it's actually assessed at one eighty-nine, seven hundred this year, should say that, next year's the projection. So uh the average annual, well, the total increase on that house over twenty-three years is thirty-six point five percent. The average annual increase is one point four percent, so well below inflation or any other standard you want to look at for con, for just for, for, just to compare to something else, that's not another school, we already just did that. We look at the growth in, in sales tax that's paid in the state compared to the population and have to lag it for two years, so I go at ninety-eight to twenty-one instead of two thousand to two thousand and three, our twenty twenty-three, because I don't have any good estimate of what the sales, so this is actual down below in FY twenty-one. So the sales tax has gone up over the same, over, o- offset by two years, but over the same number of years, it's gone up a hundred and sixty-one percent per person in the state and the average annual increase is four point three versus one point four. So I think we've done a pretty good job of keeping our property, school property taxes at a manageable level for the taxpayers. Just real briefly, we'll get into a lot more detail on this, this is a roll-up of all the tax-supported funds of the district, it's on page eight. The general fund expenditures are two hundred and eleven million dollars. The special ed expenditures are fifty-three point five. Capital outlay, twenty-eight point two plus that transfer out, so thirty-two point five. Bond redemption is at nine point two million next year and the total is at three hundred and six million, one eighty. Any questions on that? Hearing none, and just real briefly on this, here's our self-supported funds, they're not supported by taxes, they bill for, for what they provide. Food service is the most obvious of that, you can see that budget here, the total for ourselves and, and our insurance trust fund bills employees for their share of the premium and then internally it bills the funds within the district for their share of the, of the premium. So, so that's the largest of these, forty-six million in, of expenditures next year in the insurance trust fund. The next biggest by far is food service at fourteen million, so the combined total here is eighty-two point six million. Questions on that? And hearing none, it's Dr. Zeke behind me. He's up to talk about the federal funding.
Good afternoon all. Good to be here. Some of what I'll talk about first is a review from what we said last year and then we'll get more into the, get more into the details in the second part, but I'm gonna talk to you about two related topics, one is that brief overview, the summary of federal education or federal coronavirus acts and that'll look at the budget, the expenses and then the allowable uses, but a majority of the time will be in part two, where we really dig in and get into those S or budgeted items for next year that also will continue to be general, general ed funded in FY twenty-five. So just thinking about that in advance. If I can get to the right. Going to begin with this overview briefly, this looks at the three coronavirus, our coronavirus acts in S R one, two and three, as well as the CRF, the coronavirus relief fund, beginning with the four and a half million dollars or so with the CARES Act, that's Corona, coronavirus aid relief and economic security, that's S R one. And what's important about that one, it's about ready to end in September thirty of this year, that will be it, so we're closing that one up and it's in the twilight of its time. Next up is twelve million dollars for the coronavirus relief fund. Then going into S R two, also known as SIRS, the coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations act, that was a sixteen and a half million dollars. And then the final one is S R three, ARP, ARP S R, and that's the American Rescue Plan. That was a little over thirty-seven million dollars. Now again, S R one ends September thirtieth of this year, next year S R two will end and then the following year S R three will end. So if we get into the green table of expenses that I have that's green and yellow, I'll explain this briefly, if you have any questions, just let me know. We have the three S R's in, in the columns, you see S R one, S R two and S R three. The second column is FY twenty-one, then it goes to twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four to track those expenses. In the first column that we have, the first year expenses in FY twenty-one, we have the initial allocation and in S R one, you see the four point six, three zero million dollars. And then just below that, you have the requested activities that we had for FY twenty-one and the indirect costs. And just an example of indirect costs, they would be heating, lighting, everything that can be charged back to the grant or taking care of business, so to speak. And we have our fiscal, fiscal year totals there of four point four million for S R one. Then you can see S R two and S R three down below for that first year. Then in FY twenty-two, you can see where the expenses end for S R one, because that's when it, that's this year, it's, we're gonna close it up. Have you jumped to the right just a little bit, you see a negative balance of forty thousand six hundred? We just have a little cleanup accounting work to do to make sure it all comes, you can't spend more than the grant gives you. So we'll clean, we'll get that cleaned up here in the next six months and that'll be zeroed out. Now I want you to focus on S R two in the FY twenty-four column. We have a remaining balance there of five point four million dollars. Now I want you to go to S R three and you see a remaining balance of nine million dollars, but in S R three, the total expenses are fourteen million, way overspent. So there's just a little cleanup to be done, five million dollars in S R two and S R three and we'll be moving those funds accordingly. So it's not that we, we went way over, we're, we're right on track, if you look to the total balance, it's right around that three hundred thousand, still yet to be budgeted, but it's really, really close compared to the number that we started with, right around that, plus fifty million dollars. Any questions on that? In the next portion, we have, the next page, we have some examples based on categories, much the same as last year. When you look at facilities, we install bottle filling drinking stations, those are all in, that was about two hundred thousand dollars. And uh take a big breathe in, we have that clean air from the electronic air cleaning system that kills the viruses and bacteria, bacteria and mold and those are all throughout the district. And that was just a little over two million dollars. Then we have expenses and instruction, which includes SIPs teachers, along with that six hundred thousand dollar donation from Promising Futures Fund, four point three million for interactive display boards that I hear great things about, teachers are really liking them and students in the buildings, we're installing in the elementaries right now, fixed amplification system so that teachers can talk and that even kids in the back can hear equally as well as kids in the front. Learning management system, in elementary, we have CSaw and in middle school, we have Schoology. In high school, we use Google Classroom, not really a learning management system, but it's something they can organize their homework with. Then we have coaching and training, I'll let you look through those, extended learning, behavior programming, health, remote learning, sanitization and PPE, virtual academy and, and then, yeah, for those who are viewing, thank you. And then some additional to recruit and incentivize substitutes, it's been a difficult time hiring across the board, wherever you're at, so we had included incentives for that. And we revised the district's website, which we saw on Monday at the board meeting, they went through an example. We have communication tools for the home, communicating, community engagement center, we have clerical and so on. Does anybody have any questions on those expenses and strategies? Okay, the next pages are allowable. The next pages are allowable expenses under each of those grants, SER 1, 2, and 3. I'll just zip to SER 3 because it overlaps and just includes most everything in SER 1 and 2. We have anything that's authorized under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Adult Education and Family Literacy, and the Perkins Career and Technical Education Act, along with all of the other allowable expenses that go through. Just to hit some highlights, unique needs of subgroups, procedures and systems to improve the preparedness and response efforts of the district, training on sanitization and minimizing the spread of infectious diseases, sanitize and clean facilities, planning for and coordinating and implementing activities during long-term closures, purchase educational technology, mental health, summer learning, and supplemental after-school programs, addressing the learning loss among students, facility repairs and improvements, improving the indoor air quality. Again, take a deep breath in. So good for the brain and the body. Develop strategies and implementing public health protocols, and then R, which is other activities that are necessary to maintain the operations of the school. So in summary, this budget includes expenses deemed allowable per the guidelines passed by Congress, and SER funds do not include a supplement, not supplant provision. And we've estimated about $54 million of expenses over these four years. And this is the one I really want you to key in on, that Mr. Veek had said, is that $3.65 million are ongoing expenses we need to consider this year going into next year that will be general funded in FY25. Any questions on the first part?
I guess for the public, for them to understand, that would be basically additional staff that we've added on or salaries that, that's pretty much what was possible associated with it.
Lot and salaries and benefits. So now we're going to spend the rest of the time on this one, and sorry for those of you in the crowd.
I bet there's hundreds watching from home.
Yes. Small for you to see. This is our FY23 board work session for really the FY25 school year, or fiscal year. So what we need to do is decide on these strategies now for the day SER funds end, like I said before. And first I'll explain the columns and then I'll go line by line with my colleagues over on the sidelines. They're on standby right now if they have any questions to explain some of the strategies that we have. And the area in green is recommended and has been incorporated into the budget that Mr. Veek had shared. So the first one is a line number. That would be helpful in case we have a discussion and you have a question on a line, you can quickly go to 19 and we can find it easily rather than trying to fumble around. Second column, year implemented, self-explanatory. It's when we began. Category, item description, and purpose, all self-explanatory. Key in again on annual ongoing FY25 expense. That's what the general fund will take over. And then the ranking. Subcommittee's and departments ranked their strategies and then presented those rankings to the district budget committee. So that's how we got five at the top, four, three, two, and one would be the least number on the ranking. And then we have a totals column and that totals up each ranking area. So you can see at the bottom of five, I have 2.969 million dollars. And then in the running total, that's the one I started with, so it's the same, but that running total will then add the rankings of four. So it adds another 484,900 to that total and on we go, all the way down to that 3.65 million dollars at the bottom of the green. And then there's that big black line, which would be rankings two and one. So starting at the top, the first is folate, and by the way, these are in, by no means any order in five, they just, we're just going to start with tech first. Doesn't mean any more or less important, but I have the tech categories up first, folate resource manager. This is the system we have to track, things that we have with a barcode on them, could be anywhere from library books to laptops to iPads. Allows us to track those items. And that's a $21,000 annual ongoing expense. You see CSOW and Schoology, the learning management systems, which you talked about before at 120,000. Kickup, teacher feedback. Kickup is a tool that provides coaches and administrators the ability to give teachers feedback to improve teaching and learning. Mozile is a program that supports the iPads. It's five bucks a device, comes from Apple. It's what they charge us to support those iPads. Have to have it. Grade passback through Infinite Campus allows systems to talk back and forth between each other, the learning management systems in Infinite Campus. We have two positions in the tech department, IT infrastructure and software development manager. With the amount of technology that we have and the increasing, we haven't really added on anything there for a while and that, now that we have one-to-one laptops for teachers and for students, that's, that would be important to have. Social emotional category, we're looking at social workers and success coordinators in the high school, school counselors and clericals in the middle, middle and high school. We have a career coach that will be funded. You can see over FY23, it's a career coach and a counselor. So that's half funded by the counseling department. And the career coach will be at CTE to help the students find a career. We also are looking at a K-12 career counselor. That's all the way from kindergarten all the way up to seniors to help them to get into the workforce and to provide some counseling there. High school IEP facilitators. There's been a number of I, 504 plans that have increased and we just need some more support there. So we would add more in the high schools to monitor. Nursing, adding middle and high school nurses, and half of that would be sped funded. We have middle school reading intervention teachers to support those struggling readers. Staff development and world language and English language learner coordinator to coordinate that staff PD and work with those programs. Coordinator of after-school programs and community partnerships to increase the level of service that we have for students between the hours of three and six and beyond. And then coordinating all with different funding sources, how we can make that happen to reimagine what we have currently known as Kids Inc. Additional elementary assistant principals. This would bring up the elementary to full-time support for those principals in those schools and the students and teachers. We have a K-12 substitute, not, not a substitute increase, but a substitute teacher pay increase for workforce retention. In the communication categories, we have the S摩 newsletters and Aerodyne software. You probably have experienced the S摩 newsletter and then the Aerodyne, or Ariadne, I think it's Ariadne. That runs these monitors right out in the hallway so that when you come in, you know where your meetings are. Also, we have Aptogy and the web content creators. Again, that goes back to what we experienced on Monday at the board meeting, where we redesigned our website and have those staff members in the buildings monitoring and providing that good news and keeping it up to date. K-12 Insight is a survey tool that we can use. We also have high school activities, travel for sports, and girls' high school softball to increase those opportunities for girls in the high school. And as the softball comes online, as activities association, I believe, Dr. Knoll's probably the expert on that, but in his department. Any questions on ranking five strategies?
I have a question. It's not one from five, but I'm wondering where I'd find it, or maybe it's not here. You know, because I saw in the SER funds, the SIPs teachers, since I don't see it in here, does that mean they're not going to be going forward after 25 or are they going to be absorbed in the general and just not?
That's correct. That would end. If you don't see it here, that would end.
Gotcha.
In SER funding. When SER funding ends, that, that, those SIPs teachers funded by SER end.
They will end.
Dr. Boyson probably has more to share on that.
I do. So the SIPs teachers were, the second grade SIPs teachers were added a couple of years ago and that money has run out. And so they are, the eight SIPs teachers have been moved over to Dr. Fedden's budget in the CCEIS money for the second grade. And the additional first grade SIPs teachers that were added last year, so all buildings have access to that resource, they will stay on for two more years, so through 23, 24. But during next year, we're going to really study that data so we can come to you with that information and a recommendation based on the implementation.
I'm sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
So what do they cost, the second grade SIPs?
Second grade SIPs were 500, no, 644,000 dollars.
And they are absorbed in, so they are continuing, but under this special ed budget?
I think the whole SIPs program, that will be in evaluation.
Okay.
Through next year. So it's, because if they're effective in first grade, what's their effect in second grade? So we can really look at that. And then how are our students doing as we move into third and fourth grade?
So I guess, I mean, I know we're voting only next, on the 11th, on the 23 budget, so that won't be affected, but that's something to keep in mind if we want to add that on past 25, that we might have to look at.
Yes.
Yeah. And I would just add, in the meantime, we've also put in some other things into the regular ed curriculum to try to fill some of those gaps with the training and the Haggerty materials. And so then we'll have to kind of look at, at the same time, we knew we had a gap and tried to close that with SIPs. Is that effective as well as then, did we shore it up in just regular instructional strategies? And is the need the same or can we pull back from the number of SIPs teachers we need if our curriculum and our instructional strategies have started to produce better results? So those two kind of have to go hand in hand.
Thank you. Sorry.
I need just one more point of clarification. So does that mean that those items that we're going through, you know, line by line on page 17, that we will review all of those as, for inclusion into the general budget? Or is once we approve this particular budget, it's assumed that they will be absorbed into the general budget?
Every year you have to approve the budget.
Certainly.
Yeah, they're, they'll be in the base. They would be considered level four when we budget, which is level four is do next year, you know, what is it going to cost next year to do what you did last year? But everything's always up for, that's why we budget down what we call level one, which is a 10% cut. So there's always items to look at and move the line between those items, but they will be in the base budget.
Yeah. It's, this is an anomaly given SER funds, so that's why I just, I mean, it is, it's not business as usual entirely.
Every year you'll, you'll look at the same things presented and you're right, some of this is roll off and some of it is shifting between regular budgets and some of it is the ongoing pieces that we'll want to keep. And in order to do that, we'll want to evaluate that every year, no matter what, but we know we'll have some other considerations probably budgetarily in the next few years.
And I imagine there are some things that are easier to approve now and then, we said we were going to go forward with them, but we could end them, but it's, I see just here, seventh and eighth grade girls and boys wrestling. Well, if we approve that now and then in FY20, 24, looking at 25, we say, ah, we don't have room for that. Well, you've got, you've got everybody jazzed up about wrestling and now it just ends. So it's good to think about those now.
Exactly. Yeah. And to be real transparent and pragmatic with the entirety of what that may or may not mean.
So that brings us to the, to the rankings of four and seventh and eighth grade girls combined performance dance, for example. And that includes coaching and judging and transportation. During the district's general board meeting that we had with this budget meeting, not with the board, but the budget meeting, we, we had these all line by line, so there were, there were a hundred lines. So I consolidated these to make it more simpler for the board to, so there was just one lump sum there of 33,000 for seventh and eighth grade combined performance dance. Then we have an expense for middle school activities director stipends. Because of the, I believe, the increased activities at middle school, we provide them with some additional funds. I talked about the seventh and eighth grade girls and boys wrestling, includes coaching points, travel, officials. We have front desk support and that has a variety of different things that go along with it, risk management and some other tasks that will go with there and sit with Burt right now in the front. Zone our bus pass system, that is for safe travel for students. So they could have a badge or they have a device and it would tell when they got on and when they got off so that students could come to and from school safely and we would know where they were if the need arise, arose. In family support, we have the community engagement center. We hired a clerical, again, half funded by Title III because it's also the immersion intake center. And they, over at Axtel, have a room where families can go for support. They can get their basic needs met or hook up with resources in the community. In fine arts, state, state art, state arts festival teachers would get some teaching points. We'd have middle and high school direct district orchestra festival, transportation and facility rental. And then at Axtel Park with their behavior program, we would fully, be fully funded with general funds. I'm not sure what that means, but we would take the SER funds and have a psychologist's shirts and sweatshirts and expanded busing. And half of that is funded with CCEIS at Axtel Park.
You said level five were all recommended in the budget that is being presented by Mr. Veek is level four as well?
All the green.
All the green. Now you start green.
Five, four, and, five, four, and three, yes. Great question.
And I'll just add a little bit of clarification on line 32. That goes along with some of the fundamental program redesign that Dr. Knoll and that team have been working on for that K-12 picture at Axtel. So that involves some of the processes and things that we'll do there. And so we'll, we'll give you a little more information about that as we go along, but that includes kind of that program redesign.
So five and four gets us up to 3.454 million dollars. And now we'll go into level three. Eighth grade girls and boys soccer, coaching points and transportation, and not seventh and eighth grade, that's eighth grade. Living tree school management software to track fundraising and grants. Ed puzzle software at the middle school allows them to embed assessments into videos that they might show that are specific to the content that they are working on. We have communication tools, remind and let's talk to communicate with parents and, and the community. And then we have to round out three high school girls and boys powerlifting coaching points. Right now it's a club that would provide that in the high school.
And those middle school pieces that you've seen there are really designed to not only enhance our middle school students' experience, but we know it's also important to continue to cultivate students who participate at the high school level. And that's where some of that comes from. If you remember, Casey Miley did a survey with students to determine interest and to determine where we need to maybe beef some things up at the middle level. So a lot of that is related to how that fits with also high school sports.
Are we going to, at this same time, look at, because I think there was some discussion of maybe some things being cut in activities and some things being added. When will we see that whole picture of that in cases?
Dr. Knoll, were you able to hear that question?
Sorry, I didn't, I couldn't hear the question.
So I know when Casey was doing that, he was also looking at, you know, some activities might also be eliminated or cut smaller and you're going to maybe see a whole picture of that.
There's a few pieces of that that were added into the activities budget. So for example, gymnastics, the assistant coaches have not been hired for a few years in gymnastics. Those were cut, recommended to be cut. There was a performance dance, so it's not the, the performance dance team that you'd think with the state competition, the, that would perform at half times and things like that. That was cut. There was also the middle school wrestling that was at the high school. That was recommended to be cut if the middle school program went back to the middle school. So you see in there, like with the seventh and eighth grade girls and boys wrestling, since that moved to the middle school, we put the entire cost of the coaches since that moved to the middle school, we put the entire cost of the coaches there and then cut that from the high school budget, the activities budget. There was also conversation that was had in lieu of gymnastics. Currently, that was maintained at two sites instead of being cut, because it would have been the only High School Activities Association-sponsored sport that wouldn't have been offered in the Sioux Falls School District. So all of those have been offered. So that was recommended to be maintained, or at least has been maintained at this point in time.
Thank you. So would it be helpful, I'm hearing maybe your question is if we can get just a one-page overview of all of the collective changes for next year at the middle and high school level? And just so they can see that at a glance for activities?
Yeah, for activities.
For activities? Yes?
Yes, I can, yeah, we can get that.
It's not, it's not in this document, is it? I don't think the changes are reflected that way.
It is not in this document, other than these, all the things listed in there, which I could go through with you if you had a question on any specific part, are all the ones that are recommended additions. And obviously, as Dr. Saban had explained, the additions truly focused on one softball, because of the addition of softball as a South Dakota High School Activities Association-sponsored sport. The others of which were in the middle school to try to increase that participation in the middle school level. And the activities directors, the principals, met with them, Mr. Miley, and they put that combined performance dance as the number one, because there's space easily, readily available. The timing, the number of students that it would encourage to be out and actively participating. The wrestling was a transfer, because the increase in, obviously, the girls' participation in that, that we've seen statewide, it more than tripled, I believe it was, in the one year's time with the state event at the high school level. And to have that back at the middle school, so they're not being bused. The busing was eliminated a couple of years ago to go from the middle school to the high school, so to have it back into the middle school there, that was the purpose for that. And then the other part was soccer. Soccer, you'll see, it's just the eighth grade recommended at this point in time because of space. And they really wish to have a, some time to be able to work with the eighth grade first, to try to get that incorporated and, and see how that goes. And then potentially look down the road to add seventh grade, depending on how the eighth grade participation goes. And really hits strongly across demographics and ability for individuals to be able to participate in middle school activities at the middle schools.
Thank you. And this was, I kind of had heard some of these things, but it was more for, if the public comes to ask us, you know, how was this process decided, what activities would stay and what?
So the predominance of the process was utilized through the survey that went out and was great participation in that survey activity. That separated, and the number one result that came off of that was the esports. The esports is something that the state is looking at in the next year, so they decided not to implement that for next year as part of the South Dakota High School Activities Association, and they're looking the year after. So we'll probably have to address that the year after as to what the Sioux Falls School District does with that. The remaining activities here were, many of those came directly off that survey information from, from what the students had been requesting. And then obviously, the logistics of placing some of those things, you know, what do we have space for at this point in time, too? And placing those at the middle school. So the survey was a predominance of that, and then affordability and space went into the considerations of all those.
Thank you.
Just overall observation, just to make sure I've got this right. So ESAR funds have helped our budget to increase by this 3.6 million dollars of what we're reading, all in the green. And we've also then deemed those in the green will transition into our general fund budget. So after, after the ESAR funds sunset and we no longer have them, we have grown our budget, the general fund, by this amount, if we keep everything that's in the green there.
By the 3.65 million?
Right.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we, yep. Okay, thanks.
And I would just add a couple of things, just based on conversation from our committee meeting, too. So when we were talking about some of these activities, for me personally, I think it's really important that we add things to middle school. Middle school is kind of like that middle child. We hate to say that, but they're easily forgotten, you know? And so I think that there's a lot of opportunities that we can really engage those middle school students. It's a, it's a difficult time of growth and social friends and activities and kind of finding your place. And so the more we can offer that as a variety for people to participate in, I think the more we're setting our students up to be successful, having these in person. They know they're not going home and sitting by themselves, they're staying after school or coming in before school to participate. I know one of the questions that I had asked was about soccer and who would we play? Because we don't, you know, right now we have the luxury of playing, like, T and Harrisburg and some of those that were recently added. And so my understanding is, is that they're also very interested, but adding a Sioux Falls would be a huge pool of people for them. Whereas like if a Harrisburg went online, you know, they'd have to wait. Where if we go online, we have six teams that come to the table. So I think maybe the first year, it may be more of just an interscholastic, where it's just our middle schools, which I still think is fabulous to play. And then as we can get more, some of those neighboring schools around to see the popularity of it, hopefully we can grow that. There was also some concern in regards to the wrestling with the scheduling of the season, and that they were losing a lot of people who would just quit middle school wrestling and start doing basketball at the middle school level instead. There was no having to leave and go to another location and, and things like that. And so adding it back to middle school actually gave it more of a favorable schedule, allowing people to compete for the entire season and still be able to participate in basketball, where currently that's not possible. So I think we're also giving students another option of something that they can try out and be able to participate in both of those at the same time, where right now they, they have to choose. And so we're starting off with really good numbers, and then by the end, it's kind of fizzled out because students have had to make that choice, and transportation may be an issue in those areas. I'm trying to think of what some of the other things were that we talked about. We did have really good conversation about the communication with Remind and Let's Talk. And what we kind of came to the consensus of was, regardless of whether we stay with these two specific platforms, we have to have a mode of school-to-home communication. And so the idea would be that over the next year or whatever, we would be looking at how effective are those two platforms that we're using? Are we getting our bang for our buck? Are people, what are the challenges, and is there something that could replace it? But either way, we need to have money in our budget to pay for those. And so it wouldn't make sense for us to say no now and then have to come back next year with something new that really is functioning as the same type of a product for us. And I think the same would be true for our learning management systems. There were some questions about Schoology versus CSO versus Google Classroom. And as Emma told us, Google Classroom is not a learning management system, and we don't really have a K-12. And so there's also currently research being done at that to say, what is it that we could do? So in the meantime, it doesn't make sense for us to switch to something else or not have something when we're going to have something in the future. So again, at least we have a placeholder for some money. What we find may be more than that, but at least we have something budgeted as a placeholder and a way for us to not have to add a huge chunk when something may or may not change. So just kind of some of those conversations that we had that I thought, I thought our team that was at our work session was, we had very good representation from lots of different voices at all levels. And so we had good conversation about maybe people's perceptions at the building level that we aren't able to see because we're not at that level and the way that things do or don't work. So those were kind of, I was just going to see if there's anything else that I wrote down as topics for conversation. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you for sharing, Board Member Ryder. That's good perspective from that budget committee. Thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty are below that dark line. And Dr. Knold, can you speak on those? They all three seem to land in your area.
I can. The first one on there, line number 38, seventh grade girls and boys soccer. It's not that that wasn't well received, it's just that there's the concern of the space and the time. And to be able to start with the eighth grade and have those coaches focus on that with the space available at each one of those middle schools to be able to get that started. And it'll probably be a soft implementation, like Board Member Ryder said, where they'll be playing in inner city. And then there's other schools that have expressed interest that they would like to align their season the same time that we do. The next one on there, increased high school clerical time. That coincided with the high school to make them from a 10 to 12 month, to be able to deal with a lot of those things that happened during the summertime, with the, the turning in of the physicals and the, all the documentation that they have to submit then. The fourth of which on there are the final, number 40, is the high school and, and middle school suspension program. And so really, it's, it's providing a place that's probably a much more increased social, emotional training and supports and a dedicated space to try to help to keep some of those students that are on long-term suspensions located. We currently do have a suspension school, an OSS school. It would not, it does not include some of those therapeutic type and some of those social and emotional learning traits with it. That would be all including that. It would creating a, basically a whole new program out of that suspension school. And we realized with many of the things are up above that line, that there's a lot of importance on that. Obviously, that's important, but it may be something that needs to wait down the line.
How many 12-month secretaries at the high school?
Parents are their child's first teacher.
Three. Currently would be the one that's the lead clerical. The second one is the one that takes care of all the trust and agencies and the subs and things of that nature, but works with all those expenses. And then the third of which, which often is not thought of as the registrar. And so currently, for 12 months, there's three at the high school level. The clerical that would work with the activities director would be a fourth if that was added to that.
Any final questions on this document? It'd be nice to be able to give everybody everything they want most of the time, but with limited resources, we've got to make a determination. And also, ESAR puts another slant on it when you're looking at budgeting when it's coming towards the end. So I appreciate your time and your insight in, in listening this afternoon. I'd hand it over to Mr. Beek.
Okay, we're going to go ahead to page 19, just to reel, let me catch up my stuff while we're at it. Real quick, look at the general fund revenues. The greatest changes you see here is the 2.3 million dollars in the property tax levy, rising valuations essentially. State aid is, you know, 6% increase that shows up, that shows up down there, 6.6 million dollars. And 10 million dollars of federal money, that's what Dr. Zeke was just talking with you about, that those are in the budgets for next year as well as 2024, our plan to be, anyway. Our cash to finance next year is 3.8 million dollars. Then the, questions on any of those? The next few pages are how our traditional budget looks. You see that in the budget, that budget book that comes out in the fall or August. But then if you go to page 22, it's kind of where you get a little bit more, just a summary of what happened in the general fund. There's, that tells me there's over 100 tabs in our budget now, so I'm certainly not going to go through every one of these. I'm just going to touch on a few, and I'll, oh, yeah. And you'll have to remind me to scroll down, because I probably won't keep up with it, so. So that's, that's what this page looks like. So I'll just mention the tab number and, and so most people in the room have books, they can read those, because I doubt you can read them up on the screen. So first of all, tab eight, that's where we just talked about. We zeroed out the second grade SIPs program and moved it to sped CEIS, and you'll see that in their budget. And I'm going to go down to tab 31. Tab 31 is the bottom of page 24. That's health services. Here's where, last year, we, remember, we didn't budget any ESAR funds when we were doing this last year, because we didn't have all that, what goes into which program, what's exactly eligible for which. So we had some expansions last year, and, and we said, we're going to budget them in their, their traditional cost center. And then when the year starts, move them over to here and then get them fixed for next year. So this is the first example of that. We had a health services, had a FTE, a nurse, and we now have moved that into ESAR fund. So that's cut out of health services. So it's still level four, it's not a cut, because we're still doing what we, next year, what we're doing this year, we just moved it into a different fund. That's what's going on there. And the same is true on the next page. For tabs 32 with social, a social worker, and 33 with counseling. We put it in the counseling budget, always with the intention of putting that into ESAR. And the idea there is, we didn't add six or seven counselors worth of students, but we wanted, but we put six or seven counselors into the new high school and middle school. Well, it's more, might be eight, into the new high school and middle school, knowing we were beefing up our counseling services and for social, emotional needs. And so it's just, we're going to go with this and then get it, as Board Member Baker said, fold that back into the regular budget in 2025. Athletics on 35, Dr. Knold gave a very good description of what's going on there. So they took, they brought level two in here, but they, with the idea that we would fund these items Dr. Zeke just talked about, to provide even more opportunities. And then there is an expansion which isn't eligible for ESAR dollars. And that's in Mr. Kreider's budget. It's tab 64.
I don't have a 64. We're missing a page.
Did we miss a page?
It goes from 48 to 84.
Right? Oh, yeah. Page 27, tab, I'm sorry, tab 45. Yeah. I forget, are we in the cost center? Are we talking cost centers or tab numbers? Yeah. It's tab 45. So that expansion will maintain its current level of service and then add a custodial supervisor at nights to improve new employee onboarding and training processes, so that the, the new custodians that are hired get the same training from the same, or level of support, so that we can keep more of those. That's a position that's hard to fill, and it isn't easy to keep them and get them into a different job in the district. You know, certainly several do, but we do lose a lot, too. So this is a plan to try to deal with that. School board, we cut 3,381 dollars, just to, it's just matching up the actual cost of the salaries to whatnot. And then the committed funds, tab 48, not cost center, tab 48. That's got 8 million dollars in it, and what that does is fund all the salary increases for the district. It funds the health insurance and the dental increases, and then some miscellaneous things that really don't fit into any other, any, any other budget. So that was fast, and certainly study that. We have a week, we'll come back in a week and meet on those. And you also can get the real detail behind all of these. That'll be online, we can get it to the, the board members, too.
They don't have a flash drive yet.
We get you a flash drive that, that you had at the, at the, the meeting last two weeks ago. And you can go through all that detail if you'd like. But this is a pretty good, fast way to go look through these and kind of show you what's going on in these budgets. The next few pages are federal. The emphasis on that, of course, was ESAR, and Dr. Zeke spent quite a bit of time going through that. So I don't think we will, I don't plan to spend a lot of your time going through those. You can look, look on those. Remember, the federal, we only do one level, because theoretically, if the, if the money goes away, the program, the, you know, the expenditures go away. If the money increases, then we, we add more of those same type of activities.
Like tab 91, I guess, and 95?
Title I, school improvement?
Yeah.
Yeah. Dr. Zeke can answer. Yeah, Dr. Zeke can answer that question. I think it's, I think it's gonna be replaced with something else, he just doesn't know what it is, but he knows more about it than I do.
That's right. The state has told me that what's known as targeted school improvement is ending for this year. It had taken place over three years. They're ending, they're gonna jumble it up and come up with some new criteria and then identify those schools in August or September. So we just don't have any information until.
Gotcha.
It's too late.
And then four oh four, or ninety-five, the student support and academic enrichment.
Yeah, and title-four, last year, we had to, we had to take title-four and separate it into three different buckets. So you just see, you just see that, how that's working through that. Next year, you'll, so, did you have a specific question on that?
Well, I just, because whenever I see a large cut like that, I was just curious what that was. So it sounds like it's being split into.
Yeah, just because we had, in ninety-five, ninety-six, and ninety-seven are all, that's all title-four, you just had to separate it out.
So well-rounded in number ninety-six, I think is.
Took over.
More than making, yeah, that. So I think that's just how it's getting split between the three ways they fund it. Any other questions? Special education program, the revenues are gonna be at five hundred, or fifty, five hundred, fifty-two point seven million next year, plus seven point, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand from cash. So total budgeted is fifty-three point five million dollars, basically. The one, I mean, the state revenue went up fairly significantly. Most of that, SPED, SPED didn't get the 6%. They re, every two years, they take a look at the categories, each of the individual categories, and see what the actual expenses have been over the last two years. They inflate those by the index factor for the appropriate year up to today's level. So they got the 2.6 plus the prior two years of inflation. So those, in the prior years, those had grown quite a bit. They didn't grow a lot in the last couple of years, so the increase isn't quite as high. But some of that state revenue increase is also just the state maintaining its share of, they call it the Cutler-Gabriel Amendment. I think it's about 40% of the funding comes from the state and 60% from the locals. And when the property tax valuations exceed, you know, the, maybe the 3% increase average, then they gotta lower the property taxes. So some of that is just the state picking up its, its share in the Cutler-Gabriel Amendment for the special ed fund. And then below that, of course, the expenditures match the revenues plus cash, fifty-three point five million. Then we can go on to this next page and kind of look at the same, kind of the same format we did in SPED. There's a few, there's quite, I'm not gonna say quite a few, there's a few level-fives in SPED, and those are the ones I'll, I'll talk about. So the first one is tab fifty-one. It's early childhood screen. It adds a one-point screening and evaluation, I should say. It adds a one-point-eight speech pathologist, kind of worked with those kids early on. And if you have questions on that, I think, Dr. Fedden, she's here, she can certainly answer them better than I can. So that's one. Then there's the new CEIS, it isn't totally new. We had moved old CEIS-type things into the general fund over a couple of years ago. So there isn't a budget for it anymore, but these are new items that are going into the CEIS. These are for kids that aren't on IEPs, but the, the plan is to keep them from going on IEPs. That's what the CEIS's program's about. You know about the SIPs movement into there? So that's for reading. And, and then there's, the rest of it's about school, a school psych and art teacher and extel to give kids that go to that program some more interesting projects to work on. A social worker, an EA, and a behavior specialist are also in there, kind of dealing on the behavior side of it as well. So we got the reading, the academic side, as well as the behavior side. Tab fifty-five is the behavior support programs. And you can see there, it increases targeted behavioral supports and specialized instruction for students struggling with self-regulation and managing behaviors. It adds three-point FTE for tier-two support at the elementary level. We had experimented trying to make a cut a year or two ago with giving those, those tier-two teachers a regular caseload as well, while it was taking away from the, the tier-two aspect of their job. So it's just taking that, that regular caseload back from them and giving it back to a resource teacher is what's going on there. Tab sixty is speech, and we're adding 2.2 SLPs, speech language pathologists for integration, more support in specialized classrooms to deal with boundaries and behavior, and then more support in regular classrooms to deal with the academic side. So hitting both sides of that. Again, tab sixty-three, next page, is OTPT, and it's half an FTE to support the additional middle school, you know, additional middle school and high school, to make that bus travel time between the buildings and whatnot. Tab sixty-four is the psychs, we're adding 3.15 psychs. Again, to deal with all these things we've just been talking about, it's kind of a new strategy of using psychs rather than adding behavior specialists and things like that. Dr. Fedden, is there anything you'd like to add? No? All right. Sorry for trying to put you on the spot.
Scroll down.
Okay, and then tab seventy, staff services. And that's a one FTE special ed instructional coach. And it'll support the infrastructure for special educators in the district with professional development, coaching, and resources needed to impact outcomes for students with disabilities. So those are the expansions. And then, of course, you can read more about all the others and you can, when you get the flash drive, you can, you can go through the detail in the actual budgets themselves. And total budget there is fifty-three point five million dollars. Questions on SPED?
Do we currently have any SPED instructional coaches? Is this the first? We do. Okay.
Do you want to talk just a little more about that?
Yeah, you bet. So we, right now, we have an equivalent of a 3.0 at elementary, and we have one at middle school, one at secondary, and then we have two coaches, well, actually, it's not a full FTE, for our RISE classrooms as well. So we're just looking at streamlining, adding that 1.0 instructional coach at the elementary level will allow us to do some shifting. Right, right now, one of those coaches is a 0.5 resource teacher and a 0.5 coach. So she's really trying to do two, two pretty full-time positions. So we're just trying to enhance those services for our special educators.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah. And they, they do not have direct, they haven't worked directly with the SIPs. We've really kept the SIPs coaches working directly with our general education teachers. So our instructional coaches have been supporting our special educators with running SIPs groups as well. And we're seeing real similar results to our gen ed colleagues, so I'm good.
I know, that's why you should ask it, Mark. I don't know at all.
Any more questions on the SPED budget? And then after that is the, the enterprise funds. Typically spend a lot of time on those. See those rollups and what, and what they, they look like. There's some that are negative, but some of them don't even generate revenue, they're just, they help the enterprise fund. And some of those items have to be, you know, if we don't, you know, since COVID, you don't, you don't have, you know, your, your comm ed classes and whatnot, you don't, it's difficult to make money to support some of those things. So as that fund balance gets down too low, we're gonna have to either get rid of the items they're supporting, those that don't generate revenue, or look at rolling them into another fund as well. But, so this budget has a three hundred, total of a $373,000 negative balance, but hopefully, these programs will bounce back to their pre-COVID levels. So last, well, pretty much last, but certainly not least is capital outlay fund. And that starts on page forty. I'm way behind up on the screen. So this is the capital outlay plan, I'm gonna have to scroll down as I go through this. This is a capital outlay plan, it kind of guides what we're doing for the next five years in capital outlay. It's called, or I label it, CIP year five, because we're five, you know, next year's gonna be our fifth year into, since our bond and starting with those programs. So there's really, our revenue up there shows we're gonna have approximately $37.5 million next year. And it's really kind of divided into, into three major areas. One is debt service on our old capital outlay certificates. And we're gonna spend almost, you know, $11.8 million on those. And then you get the year-to-year expenditures that happen within the capital outlay fund. And, and so that's lines twenty-four through thirty-eight. You can see by far the largest there is, is renovation and maintenance. Jeff Kreider's got that fifteen-year, that massive fifteen-year plan that, that shows the carpet has to be replaced here and the roof has to be replaced there. So that's, that's that, that's, that's those items. The next biggest item in there, of course, is technology. We're at three and a half in the regular technology, and there's some federal money rolled into here that brings it up to $4.3 million. So the total non-debt service capital expenditure is $16.4 million for next year. Then below that, we have transfers and reserves. CIP projects funds, we're saving money up for when that bond money is gone so that we have money to do, continue to do, new, add new classrooms, do, do items like that that just aren't the typical renovation and maintenance. We're saving up for AV replacement fund. When that happens, it happens in a, in a year or two, and we don't want to have to budget $4 million that year. So we want to come up with $4 million and cut something else. So we're saving up for that. Same with the wireless replacement bank, curriculum bank, if we don't, if they don't have any money budgeted in curriculum in, in that particular year out of capital outlay, just drop it down into the bank. And then we have that $4.2 million transfer to the general fund we talked about. So the total budget, adding all that, is $36.7 million. Then you can see here, we're dropping 2.3 million into the CIP projects, and then you can see that cash flow. So at the end of twenty-three, we should have $7.8 million stored up for when we, the bond money runs out. And the, then the total unobligated balance coming into the year was $16 million. And so between the two, we have $23 million. But we like to have about $7 million in there, another, like, a rainy day fund for, you know, that's certainly not a very big amount for if our, our revenues take a drop or something, we, we don't have to cut everything we planned to do. We figure out what we'll do for the next couple of years till they bounce back. Then here's the banks, not, not a ton to talk about here, but instead of putting this all on one sheet like I used to like to do, we put it on two, so you could actually see it. So here's the, the land bank, CT equipment bank, the wireless replacement bank, let's see, I have a misspelling there, and technology, AV replacement. You can see what those banks look like if you're interested.
Quick question, what is the maximum you can transfer under state law from?
Yeah, it's a significant number, we're nowhere near it. I'll get that for you. I don't know, I'd be guessing, but I think it's like 40%. And, you know, that's 12, 13 million dollars, something like that for us. But I'll, I'll have the exact number next time we meet. And then, so here's the, what the capital outlay looks like in our normal budget format. See how that?
Is it 45%?
Is it 45? It could be, it's, yeah, where I just, I know it's a significant chunk, and we're way, way under that. So, but I'll, I'll find it between now and, well, probably before you leave. But we'll find it and we'll certainly talk about that next time. So there's the total capital outlay proposed budget.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So schools are a lot of capital outlay money?
Yep.
So how's that broken down? I mean, I don't need the exact dollars.
Uh, Mr. Kre-
That's discretionary money for them.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, we don't tell them what to do with it, other than it has to be a legal expenditure, a legal capital outlay expenditure, not, you know, not replacing general fund. But Mr. Kreider has a formula, he can explain it.
We have a, we have a formula that we allocate per square foot of buildings, you know, based on what it would take to replace in a 20-year replacement cycle. So they all get, it, it kind of graduates on the new buildings that just received a whole bunch of all new equipment. So they have a minimum, then it builds up over the next, you know, 20 years. So if you want me to give you a spreadsheet of that, and it shows it by allocation, there's a minimum amount that we give an elementary school that's kind of working through that allocation where they, say we have a new school that got all new equipment and furnishing. So we've established some minimums, like Jefferson will have a minimum, they won't have their full allocation because they have all brand-new equipment and furnishing. So every building's in a little bit different state, but most of them have a full allocation based on a 20-year replacement, furnishing, and equipment cycle.
Do they make that decision?
They.
About what it's spent on?
What it's spent on, we don't tell them what to spend on, no. If the, if the district builds a classroom, we supplement that, they don't have to put the dollars in for a new classroom or addition that we put on.
Okay, thank you.
And it's based on square foot, right? You might have said that.
It's based on square, square footage. Like central services, we eliminate the warehouse, the big square footage of that, because we don't have furnishings that go into that. So we try to balance that into equitable replacement of that.
But we have standards as a district for each of those schools that must maintain to.
Yes. Yep.
And then, starting on page forty-four, is the detail of all the requests and what was funded of the, I won't go through that. We always joke about, Mr. Kreider used to ask for a stump grinder every year, but after 10 years of cutting it, I don't think he asks for it anymore. But that's, that, that's the detail of the, of the capital outlay fund you have in your book. And then, that's pretty much it. I'd just say, we didn't talk, other than way back when, about the bond redemption fund. But all that does is, we budget enough money to pay off the, the debt of the bonds we passed in 2018. So that's what's going on with that fund. Any questions about any of the capital outlay fund? Any more questions? If not, I'd just say that you can look through this stuff and, you know, going through it in an hour and a half, it's pretty hard to absorb, $300 million in expenditures. So look these over, you can send questions to us and we'll get the right people at the meeting, if they're not already here, to answer those questions you have. And we'll just do a much slimmed-down version of this, plus answer any questions anybody has. And does that sound like a good plan?
Sounds like a great plan. And for the public, if anybody's viewing, our next budget work session is next Wednesday at 5:30 PM. We did the night one for that one, switched times so that if staff or public needs to attend, they can. And then we'll be voting, we'll have our public hearing on April 11th.
Yeah, the following Monday, yep. And that will be a public hearing and tentative budget approval. Thank you.
I will open up for public input. I couldn't hear.
They'll mail you the flash drives.
Oh, thank you. She's mailed all the flash drives.
That the budget review committee had.
Perfect, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, and if you have the computers you now have, you'll, we'll need to make sure they have an adapter with that because it's not the same flash drive.
Oh, yeah.
So we'll get those for you too.
Yep, we have those adapters.
Did you get those adapters when you got your machines? Okay, good, because you'll need those.
Listen.
I'll look at that, that's something different. I'll check and see if that'll do the same thing.
Thanks.
We didn't, we didn't have any sign up, sign up for public input, did we? So we can move on to adjournment. That's all, isn't it? Is that right? I'm just going to make sure I didn't miss anything off your agenda. Yeah, that's no, no public input. So do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor of adjournments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
But the same saying, we are adjourned. Thank you.